We have a roll call by the City of Newport.
Mayor Roland Dykes.
President.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
President.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Present.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you, Terry. In your packet, you have received a copy of the minutes of the previous meeting of regular session, August 9, 2022. If you've had a chance to take a look at those, or there any corrections, additions, deletions. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Make a motion.
I'll say.
Have a motion on the board then to approve the minutes as presented. It's been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
Nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Proclamation and a recognition of citizens by the mayor. Or an alderman. Do we have anyone? Moving on. To our communications from the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three things on my agenda today, and all three are going to require action by the board. I apologize for extending the length of the agenda, but these are all things that have arisen just in the last day or two and need to be addressed at this meeting. The first is in reference to our duck race that is coming up at the fundraiser for the sports teams. I went back and looked at the recording of the last meeting, and we approved the duck race. But I was contacted this week, or the last of last week, and was made aware that they're wanting to have an adjunct fundraiser in concert with the duck race. They were needing power to have a concession stand and some other things to raise more funds. And so that portion is a separate issue to the duck race. So that was not approved by council, and just for our insurance purposes, that technically needs to be approved. So that is one thing that I'm asking that we add to the agenda tonight. And let me go over, if you don't mind, let me go over the other two. I spoke with the city attorney Hurst today and asked him, could we, did we have to vote on these individually to add them to the agenda? And he said we could do them all at once. So that way, at the end of my presentation, if y'all's wish, we can make one motion to add all three items to the agenda and vote and not have to do it three times. The second thing is, we have been made aware by the state of Tennessee that they are ready to do Phase Two of this crosswalk or this intersection renovation here. Y'all remember a few years back, they came in and requested that we allow them to put this complicated signalization system in here at the depot, or they were going to make us close the crossing. And so we agreed, of course, we didn't want to close the crossing because we felt like we needed it because it's a direct route to the grammar school from Northport. And so we agreed, you all voted to allow them to install the signalization. And it was their intent to come back at a later date and to do a Phase Two of it to install crosswalks. Well, you know, they couldn't give us any kind of a timeline on that, just when, you know, like they tell you on everything when you talk to the state, oh, yeah, we want to do that when funds become available. But they can never give you a timeline on when that possibility is that the funds will come available. But we were just notified like Friday that they're ready to go to work on it, basically. And so we'd like to add that to the agenda tonight to approve that project. They're going to fund it 100%. There'll be, it's not going to cost us anything. Now, we have to pay upfront, and they pay us back. I don't know why they do that convoluted stuff. They're hiring everybody, the engineers, everybody that has to be involved, but we have to approve it, and we have to pay upfront, and then they'll reimburse us. But at the end of the day, we'll have no funds invested in it. It'll all be paid for by the state. The third thing is a little more complicated. It's a simple solution that may or may not work, but it's a complicated situation. As you all know, we have a school resource officer at the grammar school. And he's been there for, I think this is his 15th year. And he has wanted out of the grammar school for some time. And now the grammar school wants him replaced. He's suffering burnout, basically. And it's recommended by the experts that most school resource officers only be in play for about five years because of the burnout he involved in it. And he's been there, like I say, I think this is his 15th year. So he's way beyond where he really should have been gotten out of there. And we have tried, the police chief and I have tried for years to find him an avenue out of there. And we have posted and posted the job to try to get somebody else to show interest in it, and absolutely no one has shown any interest in it. We've tried to recruit folks we thought might be interested in it, other officers, and they say absolutely not. And so we met with the administrators from the grammar school this morning, and they are adamant that they want to change immediately, basically. And so we've come up with a temporary solution, which is rotating people in up there just to basically serve as a glorified security guard. Because the SRO officer goes through extensive training, specialized training to do that. And the regular officers do not have that training. But to go up and direct traffic and just be on site and walk the halls, you don't need specialized training for that part of it. But what I would like to do, and Maurice now, we've been talking about this for a while, trying to find a solution to this issue. And the only thing we've come up with that we've not tried, and there's no guarantee it'll work, but I would like your permission to put a supplement pay onto the school resource officer's salary. Now, the school year is 180 days, and that comes to 36 weeks. And what we would like to do is to supplement the resource officer $100 a week for being the resource officer as an incentive to try to get somebody to sign up to go up there. Now, everybody says, well, just make somebody go. And you can, absolutely. I mean, you know, Maurice and I have the authority to make anybody that we want to go up there, but it's counterproductive. You know, the school resource officer has got to be somebody that's buying into what they're doing because it's such a complicated deal. Because they're really an adjunct teacher is what they are. And they teach anti-violence, anti-gang, anti-drug. They have this curriculum that they teach, like the fifth, sixth, and seventh grade, maybe, I forget exactly, I know the fifth's one of them. But you can't just send anybody up there to do that. They're not certified to do the training. And if you send, if you make somebody go up there that don't want to go, their heart's not going to be in it, and they're going to go up, and you're going to be right back in the same boat within a matter of months with somebody who doesn't want to be there and is not applying himself to the job. And you're not solving a problem, you're just changing the players in the game. So you've got to find a way to entice somebody to want to go. And the only thing we've got left is money. And of course, I can't do it without y'all's permission, y'all's approval. And I'd like to try it. There may still be nobody want to go. And I don't know, you know. They, Ms. Burgett and the principal, they ask, would we have a problem with them approaching officers and trying to recruit somebody? And I told them, I have that. You know, go ahead. But, you know, in most places, you have people lined up wanting to be a school resource officer. Most cities, counties have no problem whatsoever getting folks to put in, to sign up to be school resource officers. But rather, that has not been the case here. Nobody's wanting to do it, nobody.
Have we posted that position outside of the department?
The way you can. Yeah, see, it has to be an officer. We talked about, I asked her, you know, I told her today that that one option that they have is to go to the sheriff's department. They can put a sheriff's deputy up there. And she said she just really didn't want to do that. She thought it was bad optics. She thought it looked better being a city school, it'd be a city officer, and I agree with that. But I was, I was just telling her, you know, there's limited options on what she can do. And that is an option, but it's one she doesn't want to pursue. And I would prefer not to do that either, but looking for a solution, that is a solution. But what she did inform us of one thing that I did not know until this morning was that I told her that maybe temporarily that she just go to a security service. And she said it had to be an officer for them to get credit for being a safe schools. And that security guards did not meet the criteria to get those points that you have to have to have that designation. So she said it had to be an officer. And so that's your two choices. I mean, you either have a deputy or a policeman. And we would rather it be a policeman, and she would rather it be a policeman. So, I mean, I'm wide open to suggestions. You know, Maurice and I went back and forth with this for months. You know, this conversation really started last year during the, when they first went back to school after the pandemic. We were having issues, and we've been trying to get somebody to go up there for over a year. And, I mean, it's just, it's just not happened. There's been zero interest. And like I say, there's no guarantee that anybody will jump on the bandwagon for $100 more a week to be up there. Now, to be clear, this would only be while they are on duty the week as a school resource officer.
We'll rotate, right? You're going to try to rotate it?
No, that's what we're going to do till we find somebody.
That's what we're going to do.
Yeah, we're going to rotate the day shifts up there, make people go up there, take turns going up there and being a glorified security guard, just watching the traffic and walking the halls and that kind of thing. But, but back to the supplement, that would only be while they're on duty in the school. It wouldn't be during the two months of the summer that school's out. It wouldn't be the two weeks, the Easter break, the two weeks, Christmas break, the fall break. All those kinds, those times, they would draw regular pay. They would only get the SRO supplement when the SRO is on duty. So it'd only be for 180 days. It wouldn't be for the full calendar year. And that would be 36 weeks, so that's $3,600. As Maurice says, that's $20 a day.
I think we should probably formalize the suspension of the rules to add these items to the agenda. And you've heard the presentation. What is the board's pleasure?
I've got a question back to the.
Yes.
What is the timeframe for that, once they stop? Is it a long period of time?
I wouldn't think so. Gary's been involved with that.
Not since, you've got generally the infrastructure that you need with the poles. It's, I think, one small, you know, my height pole on, I think, that side, and they put the signal on the big pole over here and just paint and strip it. Probably 30-ish days because they are going to ADA fix the sidewalks on that side, which is needed.
Is this going to cause a delay in traffic, a block, or?
They will likely, when they get into the, all the electrical's in, so they won't have to shut the street down like they did before. But when they are doing the concrete, they may need at least half of the street closed down on either side so they can work.
And when they're painting or putting down the decals, a lot of times they do the decals on the crosswalks, they would just have to close it while they put those down, which would just be, wouldn't be long.
So it's not going to be 30 days?
They wouldn't be leaving it blocked for days.
All the way through, or anything like that?
Funny, I generally, when we do get a bid, I tell them that, especially if it's anything near Edrick or them, that between eight and nine, and three and four, if they can get off to the side or do something that doesn't require the street being shut down, please do it. So I am conscious of that, try to keep this from happening if I can.
I've got one more question about the resource officer. Does the one at grammar school, when school's not in session, do they work regular patrol?
Yes.
So if in the summertime, that resource officer, he's got a full benefits?
Yes, sir.
It's just like a regular police officer, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
When school's not in session, they're working out on the street?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I make a motion, we accept or propose?
Make a motion, votes that we add those to the agenda?
Okay. Agenda, yes.
That's what we need out there. That's second. I like, we have a motion to suspend the rules to add these three items to the agenda. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign.
Maurice, you sort of keep up with that and let us, keep us informed a little bit. They might like it up there, you know, on a rotate basis and see what happens.
Hearing none, motion carries. Did you have some others?
No, sir, that's it, that's enough.
Okay. Item six then is the announcement of the appointment to the fire civil service board of Ms. Amy Ball. This is, she, Ms. Ball is a replacement for Mike Overholt, who resigned. So we don't need to take a vote on this, it's just an announcement that she will be go to the fire civil service board. Is Ms. Ball here? No, not, okay. For item seven, reports from committees, members of council, and other offices. And Carrie doesn't have anything. You have anything? Reports from committees?
Oh, nothing, sorry, Mayor, I was talking to Mr. Martin, no, I don't have anything.
Pay attention back there.
Put down that.
All right. Item A is old business, unfinished business. Item A is consideration of the second reading of ordinance number 2022-13, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
And Mayor, I'll read the caption, that ordinance into the record, it's ordinance number 2022-13, an ordinance amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2022-2023.
Heard the reading of ordinance? Yeah, we need a roll call, please. I'm sorry, yeah.
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-13.
That's right.
All right, we have a motion on the board then to approve the reading of ordinance number 2022-13, budget amendment for the city of Newport. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your, we need a roll call, I'm sorry.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Motion carries. New business, consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2022-14, amending the zoning map for the city of Newport to rezone 226 Jaybird Street.
This ordinance was passed on the city council with a recommendation of approval from the planning commission. The rural medical office bought three, three pieces of property off Jaybird. They're expanding their building, but the property they bought is basically for their parking lot for their staff. And we did the good neighbor letter to let everybody around know what was going on. It shouldn't increase traffic because it's not meant for patients coming in and out, it's for staff mostly. If anybody's got any questions, and also Mr. Price, you're the architect, correct? Yeah, he's here if you had any questions about the project.
Board's pleasure. Any questions?
I'll say.
Did we, did we make, did the motion, I heard a second, but I didn't hear the first?
I have a motion, sir.
All right, we need a roll call then.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B is consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2022-15, amending the zoning map for the city of Newport to rezone the Woodland Park.
This is the last step in the annexation of the property. Mr. McSwain, I had it zoned differently, and Mr. McSwain recommended we change it to R2 to match what the current city park is. So that's the ordinance you have in front of you, and we're looking now to create a new, basically a recreation zone. Some we don't have, other, a couple other places got it, so that's business we'll get to down the road, but we're going to zone it as residential for now. At the board's pleasure, I mean.
Heard the presentation, what's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-15.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve the reading of ordinance number 2022-15, amending the zoning map for the city of Newport to rezone the Woodland Park. It has been properly seconded. We need a roll call.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C is consideration of contract between E911, Emergency of Cock County, and the city of Newport.
Okay, this is the contract that we go into routinely with 911. If you'll recall, when the controversy was taking place between us and the county over the makeup of the 911 board, we postponed this. We wanted to try to see where that issue was going before we renewed our contract with them. And of course, this contract is for us to fund four dispatchers at 911. And, you know, when we, when we originally consolidated and created it, we had four dispatchers on staff. And as they retired, we contracted with 911 to provide the service, and we pay for it. And so now all of our original dispatchers have long retired, and so all four of the employees, they are employees of 911, they are not our employees, but we foot the bill for them. And so this is just the contract that, it's just to renew the contract that's been in place for many years now to provide that service and for us to pay for it. And I was not comfortable renewing that contract until I felt like that the makeup of the board had been resolved. It has now, it's been returned to its original makeup, to where the city has representation on it. I was not going to recommend that we renew a contract with them if the board did not have city representation on it. I didn't, I did not feel like that was proper. And now our representation's back on it, and I'm comfortable with it, and it's my recommendation that we renew the contract.
Heard the presentation, what is the board's pleasure?
I make the motion.
Second.
Right, have a motion on the board then to approve the consideration of contract between E911, Emergency of Cock County, and the city of Newport. Has been properly seconded. We just signify your approval by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign.
Thank you, I'm glad you got that straight.
Y'all have, y'all attended some meetings and showed that your support for the city's position on it and represented the city well, and I appreciate y'all getting involved and making sure that the forces that were opposed to that staying the same saw that we were a united front here. And sometimes that's what it takes, and y'all stepped up to the plate on that, and I appreciate y'all doing that. I think that played a big role in the fact that you all took ownership and stepped in and let, let everybody know that the city was united on this issue.
Heard no opposition, so motion carries. D, item D is consideration of the annual Tennessee Highway Safety Office High Visibility Grant for the Newport Police Department.
Mr. Mayor, that's an award we get every year from the Governor's Highway Safety Office. We have to do an electronic filing to try to get it. We, it's allocated so many dollars for overtime for a special enforcement campaign of traffic violations on state highways, and the other part's allocated for safety equipment. This year's safety equipment was, I don't know if you've ever seen the officers with the bright yellow gloves and then the reflective, so if they're at night they're working, you see the movement of their hands, and a miniature flashlight for all the officers to have. We've utilized last year's contract, just need your all's permission to go ahead and accept this year's contract.
Okay. Heard the presentation, what's the board's pleasure?
Make a motion, accept that contract.
Stereo motions. Motion by Ottinger, second by Karen. Okay, we just need, motion has been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign.
Y'all will be back in a few months to ask to do that again.
Hearing none, motion carries. Item 10, bids, purchases, and expenses.
We need to, I'm sorry, Mayor, we need to back up and do those three items we added.
That we added.
E, number one would be the duck race.
All right. Okay, item E then is the presentation you've heard for the three items we added to the agenda?
Yeah, the first would be the duck race, the concessions, and the supplemental fundraising project that they wanted to do. They said they would need power from the police station. We checked and found an outlet for it to make sure that they'll have access to power. And we just need for you all to approve the use of the parking lot for that purpose, just so the insurance, if something was to happen, so the insurance will be, it was sanctioned by the city, it wasn't an unsanctioned event.
And the parking lot to be used is behind the police department?
Correct.
Okay, we need a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve.
All three?
Second.
Well, we're just voting on the duck.
Yeah, we gotta do them one at a time.
Gotta do one at a time.
Do them one at a time.
We can put them on all at one time, but we have to address them one at a time.
Yes.
That'd be a better procedure.
Okay. Make the motion for the duck race, okay. All right, we have a motion on the board to approve the duck race.
Party.
Party or adjunct activity. It's been properly seconded, please signify your approval by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Crossword, cross.
Crossing.
Wall.
Project.
Yeah, the Phase Two of the improvements of the depot crossing here at City Hall, which will be the crosswalks. And it's state-funded.
We need a motion.
Motion to approve the upgrades.
Like watching a tennis match here, so.
Most experienced.
We'll give you the motion, and we'll give Alderman Hansel the second. All right, you heard the presentation, it's been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. And the third was?
The supplemental pay for the school resource officer at the grammar school for, only for time worked as the school resource officer. Of $100 a week.
Okay. Need a motion.
I make a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board then to approve supplemental pay for SRO. It's been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and maybe this will solve it, I hope so. If it don't, I don't know what we're going to do.
All right, now we move on to bids, purchases, and expenses. And item A is consideration of bids for the renovation of the burn pit for the street department. department.
Uh, yes, this is a situation that has risen that is a safety situation. It's where we burn our brush, yard debris, stuff like that for the city down at the burn pit. And the walls are starting to crumble on it. And it's gonna have to be rebuilt, refixed. So I put up for bids for it and I only received one bid back on it. That was profitable construction. And, uh, the bid on it was forty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That was to take all the old block out and replace them with new ones and backfill it and fix it back as it was originally. And I've already talked to the state about it and they give us permission to go ahead and refurbish it and put it back like it was. We're not increasing it, making it any bigger or making it any smaller.
And the total again was forty thousand?
Uh, forty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And I'm asking that you all approve this and?
Ben, how long has the current pit been operational?
Uh, approximately fifteen years.
Oh, wow, okay.
We wouldn't need a budget amendment to add that to the capital plan because that wasn't something that we had foreseen having to deal with this year.
Just gotta do it though.
Yeah.
Yeah, if not, we gotta stop burning the brush and we just have to start stockpiling it. And there's a limit to how much of that you can stockpile. The state inspects this, um, annually, I think, and, um, they won't, if, if we don't re, re, it can't really be repaired. The only way you can fix it is rebuild it because it, or the heat works on it over the years, it is causing to start crumbling and it just collapses. And so there's not, uh, like a, a patch you can do on it. You just have to totally tear it out and rebuild it. And, um, it's highly unlikely the state would, uh, would recertify it in its, in its conditions. Once they start to deteriorate, it happens rapidly. It's not like with, for you, this little bit of it kinda starts to trickle off, little chunks or whatever, it just, it just almost crumbles and then collapses. So it's, you know, it's, once it starts, it's not gonna be long, it'll just collapse. And that's why he's talking about a safety issue. If somebody was working close to it, the walls could collapse and they could go down into the pit when the walls collapse.
Do we need a budget amendment before approving this?
No, you can go ahead and approve it. Um, and then just the next time I do a budget amendment and present it to you, that'll be part of that. And it'll be a drawdown on the general fund. I did wanna throw out there, you know, Ben remembers having been here when we did not have that. And the fifteen years ago price to actually chip out all the brush that he now burns was what, thirty thousand dollars?
Uh, the first year, we did two years. First year was thirty-four thousand, the second year was twenty-eight thousand.
To chip the brush.
For an alternative. And the state approved us to do this and they call it an iron curtain is the correct.
So it does pay for it.
This is much more feasible, uh, if you spread it out over an approximate fifteen year life of the burn pit.
Two, two years it pays for it.
We've saved a lot of money over the years.
People don't realize how much y'all do down there either. You'd have to go down there and see it. Didn't it pile up? It wouldn't have enough room in Cock County to pile it up.
Right.
We have, we have loads per day that come in, every day.
And it's a good thing we had this. When the storm come through years ago, uh, we burned all that brush, it would've been enormous what it cost to chip all that.
Ben, is it usable now?
I mean? Yes, we're still using it right now, but, uh, we're gonna have to shake them before long. That's why I'm trying to prepare, get this and get, get someone set up to replace it if you all approve it.
All right, heard the presentation, what's the board's pleasure?
I make the motion, we approve that.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to, for the renovation of the burn pit for the street department in the amount of forty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. It's been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by a normal sign of eye.
Aye.
And maybe we need a roll call.
No.
No, okay. All right, motion carries.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Appreciate your speech, Ben. He likes to talk.
All right, item B is consideration of bids for the renovation of Tanner Building.
I am impressed because he was like, well, we've got a situation that's presented itself and he don't like getting up here. Uh, this is, the biggest thing is if you look at the windows up there, the wood in the frame, it's, it's not in great shape, it's chipping out, some of it's rotting out. So this, gonna remove that and replace it with, uh, it's metal that we won't have to replace and won't wear down the same way that the wood has over the years. And it's some painting in the building. And we have one bid, so.
One thing is, um, the, I'm sure most of y'all are aware that, uh, last year, when the governor came, he wanted to visit the, the building. And we became aware that there had been extensive damage to the Walter State portion, uh, where the, the, the walls had been vandalized. And we, we tried to, we cleaned it as best we could, we touched it up as best we could, it still looked awful really. But we made it look as good as we could for the governor's visit. There wasn't a quick fix that we could do. We did get to the bottom of how it became, uh, damaged and it was through the two children of a professor that came and taught a class. I don't know if they were an adjunct professor or a regular, uh, I don't know. But I spoke with a gentleman that's over the, the satellite schools and he said that they would help with the damage. So, uh, we're gonna approach them. I don't know, you know, of course, we didn't have a dollar amount at that time, uh, what it was gonna cost to repair that. And, uh, he didn't say we'll pay for it, he said we'll help. So I don't know how much help that means. But we are going to approach them now that we, once we get it done and we have a number on what it actually costs to do those repairs, uh, to see what kinda help they're talking about. But we're, we basically have no recourse other than to, to make a big stink about it as far as getting them to, to foot any, any of it if they choose not to. But the damage was done by two children of a person that was up there teaching a class that night.
Insurance wasn't there or something like that? Probably not.
Well, I don't know, we didn't, we didn't, we hadn't tried that because Walter State had said they would help with it. We not, we didn't, we didn't take that approach with it.
And these people can't be held responsible for it?
Well, I mean. Yeah. If, if you can get someone that will go on the record saying that that's what happened.
So that'd be formal charges.
Yeah. You've got, I don't know how old these, these children were. Uh, we only had a witness that saw who was doing it and it was determined that the teacher had brought, uh, their children up there and they'd entertained themselves in the hallway, pushing each other and rolling chairs up and down the hall, slamming into the walls. And knocked, they scuffed all the walls, knocked toes in them, knocked corners off. I mean, it was awful what I was done. Yeah, but Walter State was the one that determined what happened. If they hadn't told us that they had determined what happened, we wouldn't have known that happened. We didn't, we didn't know, uh, at that time. We didn't have cameras and stuff and we, we didn't have a clue how it happened. They were the ones that informed us how it, how it had happened and said that they would help, that's when they told, that they would help with it, when they informed us that they had determined how it happened. They just said that a witness had come forward and told them about it. So I, you know, that's all the information I have. I don't know who the teacher was, I don't know who the witness was. Uh, we didn't, we did not pursue that any farther when they said they would help take care of the, the costs.
Now that we have a, a price for the cost, could we possibly, um, table this until we can go to someone with Walter State with the price and see if they'll pay for that part of the damage before we?
Well, except y'all, whatever, however you wanna deal with it.
I just don't feel like we should be taxed at that cost if it's a Walter State employee. Um, it's children who made these damages and they've said that they would pay, then let's let them pay.
Well, they said they would help, whatever, whatever that means.
The cost was a bad one, so you might pull it down.
Wonder how old kids are, if they're old enough to work, but then where I doubt it. If, if they had to bring them there and, cause they didn't have a babysitter, I, I would guess that they're probably in the eight to ten to twelve year old, maybe, probably eight to ten year old range, just be a wild guess.
Parents can't keep control of their kids better than that.
Well, I mean, you know, we all know that now, times aren't now like they used to be. When I, when I went somewhere with my parents, I was told to sit down and stay there and that's what you better do. You know, you weren't just left your own devices to, to, to go, go wild and do whatever it took to entertain yourself. But we live in different times now.
They make iPads for that now.
Yeah, smartphones.
Yeah.
But, um, I mean, it's, it's gotta be repaired. I mean, it looks, it still looks really bad. Now, one thing we're doing, and I talked to that same gentleman, I can't remember his name, uh, but I talked to him that day. We've got these four, uh, benches back here in the back, uh, that we had planned to put in the viewing room of the, uh, of the Tanner Building. And now that that's being occupied by the, uh, whichever veteran organization that is, uh, we don't have that. So while, we're, we're in the process of refurbishing them right now. And, uh, what we're gonna do with them is, is put them up along the wall, two on each side of the hallway in that, in Walter State wing. And they're long, uh, they're, they're probably sixteen, eighteen feet long. And then they will help, it work like a, you know, almost like a char rail. You know, you, with that, they're, they can't, they won't be anybody bumping into the walls with, uh, with those up and down the hallway. So that's, they're, they're gonna help to, uh, protect the walls from anything in the future. But, uh, we, we've got two of them done and we're working on, we still got two to go. But once the painting is done, uh, and the repairs, we're gonna have those, we're gonna put those in up there as a barricade to, to protect the walls. And it will provide seating for folks waiting for a class or on break between class or whatever. So the guy from Walter State said, yeah, that would be a really good thing for them to have that extra seating in the hallway. So it'll serve more than one purpose and get it, get that, get them out of here because we need the space in the back and it'll serve a purpose up there.
When all of the bids came in over and we took preen at the lowest and then there were added costs in, some of the things we started doing to try and offset was making cuts. And Walter State wasn't involved then. So as far as we knew, it was gonna be office space for adults on that hallway. Well, now you have teenagers and, and twenty-year-olds. Uh, and a lot of it, they'll stand like this.
Yeah.
And the paint, we cut, we cut the paint, the quality of paint, the paint's so cheap, like if you just go do that, it puts black mark and it's not good enough to just dry. If you had better paint, which we do, we bought better paint or, um, Virginia helped me pick out better, I don't know paint, but we had better paint. So now if you get a kid putting their foot on the wall, you go back and clean it and it'll be okay.
If you cleaned it, if you used any kinda cleaner on it, it would go down to the sheet rock.
Yeah.
Uh, the paint would just come right off. I don't think they used water-based paint or what, but if you tried to clean it, the paint come off and you just went down to the sheet rock. And then another thing is the floors upstairs. You know, with the, at the partnership end of the building, we kept the original floors because they were, they were really a neat feature and we wanted to keep those and, and re, and they needed to be sanded and re, revarnished and sealed and all that. And so, uh, as Gary was talking, that was one of the things that ended up, we kept getting moved down the list, uh, as more important things got done and there was cost overruns. And ultimately it, when it got to the bottom of the list, it fell off. It, we ran out of money before we could get those, that floor redone. Uh, we're still not redo, totally redoing the ones in the partnership offices. This is the hallway outside the partnership and it's to, uh, sand it, uh, restain it and seal it and all that to make it look really nice. Because right now it's, I mean, it's got an old worn, scuffed up look to it that really doesn't, doesn't go with a, a totally refurbished building. And so, uh, that is one thing that's also in this project.
Or any other questions? Comments?
Well, I've noticed there, a bid form indicates that it's good for fifteen days from the date of the proposal, or whatever that's worth. So if we put it off, we might have to rebid it, maybe.
Possibly.
Gary, what do you think?
Was that?
We might have to rebid it.
Possibly, yeah.
But I'd say maybe we should.
Well, you know, when we, when we did the, 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 the last, uh, approval on the project to, uh, to finish up the windows and the awning, uh, on the welcome center and of course also the awning at the entrance to Walter State. Uh, you know, they came in and they got the windows and the door done really quick, but we're still waiting on the awnings. And, uh, that, that's been what, three months now, maybe?
It is that long ago? I thought it was, I thought we pushed in July and then they were in there late July and then it might've been the other way.
I was thinking it was June, but it might've been, I, I was thinking it was in June.
We're waiting on some part for the awning.
Yeah, but we're still waiting on the awnings and that, that's the only thing now, as y'all know, uh, you can approve a, a, a purchase or anything today and it may be a year before you do, so.
When those come in, they'll come back, the gutters come off, they get replaced and they're gonna pressure, clean everything off, the facade. Uh, is there anything else? I think that was it. I think that's the last, and the awnings go up once they do that. So then your, your presentation of the building is where we intended for it to be.
We, we have all of the, uh, furniture and equipment up there for the welcome center. We're gonna begin assembling it next week. We're gonna have a two-man crew up there Monday, uh, to begin assembling that. It all came in boxes, nothing came, uh, like everything you buy now, it never comes assembled. So, uh, chairs, desks, tables, everything has to be assembled. So they're gonna begin that process Monday. But, uh, I'm not, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not keen on opening till we get that awning replaced. That was it, the tore wall, it's dilapidated. Uh, I'm amazed that the wind hadn't blown it off, uh, the shape it's in and as bad as the wind has been, uh, passed several months. So I, I'm, I'm amazed that both of those things are still hanging off.
Or the old satellite dish that's still on top.
Yeah, that'll come off too. We don't, we, we could reattach it as a building, I mean. Let's plug it in and see, you can never know.
There's a blue sign up there that I wanna see come down too. Okay, any other comments, questions?
But I do want to aggressively pursue, uh, them being responsible for the debt. And, and, uh, they, we have a verbal agreement with them, they're gonna help with it. But they, I had no number I could throw at them at that time on what it was gonna cost. I had no, I didn't have a clue on what it cost and he just said, yeah, we'll, we'll help with it.
Well, I would like to aggressively pursue that before we do anything else.
Noting. All right, we have, I guess we have a vote. What's the board's pleasure?
Doesn't sound like you're basically gonna make a motion to approve it, Mayor.
It didn't sound, look like it does.
What would you reckon?
Move on.
I, I mean.
Might take a long time, we have to wait on?
Well, I mean.
They can get started tomorrow if you approve. And I don't know how much we're talking in the liability on scuffing up the wall and knocking some drywall off. I don't, I mean, I don't know if, is it, is it worth? Maybe, I don't know.
Well, if we wait, building material prices will go up.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of unknown variables. I mean, I, I hate to take a position any way on it, I mean. on it. I mean, because with my luck, I'll say, let's do this and then it'll blow up. So if I say, let's wait, the prices will go up. And I say, let's do it, the prices will go down. So, uh, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna chicken out on it. I'm gonna say, uh, 'cause I don't, I don't know.
I make a motion. We go ahead and try to get this out of the way.
I do. I, I don't, you know, I, I don't know what it would be if we, like, we would have to bid it again. And, uh, you know, if we put it off, we will have to bid it again.
We have a motion. We have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Would that be a motion with a, uh, a statement to the city administrator to actively pursue any recovery?
I like a percentage. How much?
Like tomorrow?
I will not, I'm sorry, I will not tomorrow. Uh, tomorrow is my last day and I will not be. So, I would gladly make that a priority, but I, I can't promise I'll do it tomorrow.
I do agree with what she says.
Yeah, I do too. I, I do, I do agree. And I had every intention of doing that because, uh, because they pledged that and I planned to hold them to it. I just don't know what proceedings that is when they say we'll help. Because I couldn't give you the number on what we're looking at.
Well, the taxpayers ponied up the money on the Friday. Picks it, so.
Okay.
But I absolutely think they need to help with it.
We have a motion and a second. Will entertain. Please signify your approval by a normal sign of eye. Nay is like sign.
Now, I will say, if Gary would, hey, I will be back Monday. Uh, if Gary would, try to contact the guy that we need to talk to and ask him if he'll meet with us next week.
Do you, do you know?
He was the, he was the guy that was over, he didn't, he was over the satellite facilities, I thought.
Okay. Were there, what there's?
Matt.
Huh?
Matt.
Neither Matt or, uh, the tall guy. Is it the tall guy, Brian?
I don't remember.
I'll, I'll talk to them both. It's fine.
I don't remember which one. Well, I, I don't remember.
I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll talk to them both. Yeah, I'll figure it out.
Be in charge of figuring that out, Ben.
Yes, sir.
If you're gonna try to, if we have to meet both of them, you have to try to set something up for next week.
Okay. I can do that.
Ms., Ms. King, did you understand that was four to one?
It's four to one.
Uh, I'm sorry, what?
The vote was four to one with one nay.
I'm sorry, okay.
Okay. In other words, motion carried.
Thank you.
It's been four to one so good till September 28th, correct?
Uh, yes, that's, that's what it looks like, yes.
Nays.
Okay. Are we comfortable with moving on? Just dragging out my boots and my, my seat.
Sorry, buddy. You're already, you're already on overtime.
Yeah, I know. Okay, item C is consideration of bids for the operations desk at the community center.
I don't wanna go through what Gary just went through.
You got, you got two minutes.
I'm ready. Uh, I know how hard it is for Gary to get these bids, or all of us. Uh, every time that our pricings come in, it's been $5,000 more than we originally looked at. So, uh, we try to get the bids and, and then when we, we put out the 30-day advertising, we try to do everything we can. And we might get somebody that bids, then somebody may not bid. So if Gary has to go back or I have to go back and, and bid, uh, to get a second bid or a bidder, uh, we can't even get the person that put the bid in the first time to put in a second bid for it, you know? So it's such a challenge for us to get these bids right now. We, we've been trying to bid out a scissor lift that was approved to, to get away from ladders. And one of the things that we're finding is that you can't go to a rental store to buy this type of equipment and the, the people that own these companies never put in bids, so they don't know what the heck they're doing. And so we try to send them information, then they send it, then they send it two days late. They don't, you know, they don't understand the deadlines that we, we're faced with. So right now, you know, we're rebidding a scissor lift that, uh, is gonna be essential to us in, in our operations in every building, uh, the Tanner Building, the Community Center, City Hall and all. But then you turn around and you can't even get them to bid on it. So it's such a challenge.
And we also have a situation like with the fire truck right now that we ordered the brush truck. Uh, that's, uh, since we ordered it, it's went up, what, $4,500?
About that, yeah. Maybe more.
But since we, they, they build them, they, they don't keep them on lots. You can't just call and say, send me one. You have to call and order it and they build it. And since we called and ordered it, it's went up almost $5,000 since we ordered it. You'd think the price would lock in when you order it, that they couldn't do that to you. But they, they do it. And we've already had that happen on our brush truck. It's already went up almost $5,000 since we ordered it.
Okay, back to, back to our, uh, operations desk here. I am asking for approval and our, our bid opening was September the 7th. And, uh, this is for the new part of the community center for where we're doing our operations. And I invite every one of you to come up and, and check it out to see what we've done. It's, it's coming into its own. It's a really nice area and it's gonna be essential operations, the way that we're doing it. So that, remember the safe program that you passed, uh, same access for everyone. This is what this is all about. Again, the operations desk is important to us. It, we're growing every month, uh, every day. It seems like we're having more with pickleball. We're starting volleyball. We're doing a lot of good things with the county too, uh, uh, the same programs. So, uh, it's gonna be essential. But if you got design questions about what we've proposed, you gotta talk to Virginia. I'm not the designer of it. I'm just, for sake.
Is it gonna be located on the Cosby Highway side or the Prospect side?
Cosby Highway side. Yeah, it will, it will come into where the, the new, uh, atrium is, entrance right there. And you will walk straight, straight into it, which will be an elevated workstation operations. Then it will tier down into a, a, a work area. So it's, she's got it planned out well and we've gotta get this in before we can get the flooring in. So we would appreciate your approval on it. And actually, the price went up from where we started, uh, $5,000, almost $6,000 from, from when we originally first looked at it. That's how much it's went up.
Reflected in this $19,000?
Yes.
Okay, you've heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the board to approve the operations desk at the, uh, community center in the amount of $19,239.08. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by a normal sign of eye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none?
Appreciate your job, y'all do.
Thank you.
And most people don't have any idea of how much the recreation department does for city and county. So I appreciate what you do.
We, uh, we, 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 we've earned a place in our, in our city. That's the way we like to look at it. So we tried to create a department that where we're needed. And right now, we're needed to do a lot of good things. And the flowers are really nice. So don't forget to thank Fay about the flowers too. Thank you.
Okay.
We recognize, how many people we got in here from the partnership? I know.
One.
Okay, there's another one.
Leadership.
Leadership, okay, that's what I meant.
One.
Two.
Two.
I knew we had two there.
Okay.
Mayor, I have one quick question.
Okay.
Who's responsible for the damage to the roads at the city park due to the new highway construction?
That's a good question.
We've had, Ben and I have had conversations about that. I've had multiple calls from, uh, residents over in Richland Park about the damage. Uh, I went over and looked at it. Ben and I went over and looked at it. Ben, Ben, when we first started getting questions about it, we spoke with the, the guys over there from the state doing the project. And, uh, they're gonna, they're gonna be responsible, when I say they, the state basically, is gonna be responsible to put, to repair the roads when, uh, when the project is done. They're gonna have, they're, they're gonna, I don't know how many we can prove were impacted, the direct routes that they take, uh, the trucks take to get to the project. But, uh, but we've looked at it and there, there's definitely extensive damage being done. But the state's gonna be responsible to repair the, the roads that they admit they damaged. So we may get into a debate with them. That's, that's why he says it's a good question, uh, because they'll, regardless, I, I have told them that, uh, whatever streets the road, uh, that the state does not repair, we will repair. So, uh, to try to settle their fears because they're, as you can imagine, which, which, Almond Hansel does live over there, he's just not been on the street. I think they've been utilizing much or if any. But, uh, the streets they're going on, man, they're, they're crumbling. And so I'll, just to, to soothe their minds, I'll assure them that if, whatever the state does, they're gonna take care of. They're not, the roads are not gonna be destroyed and them left with, with, with a mess over there. The, we're gonna try to, just like with the walls at the Tanner Building, uh, we're gonna try to make the state do as much as we can. But, but we'll, we'll make sure that they're taken care of. Uh, we don't, we're not gonna leave our residents without a decent street.
All right, we are, uh, comments from citizens. Is there anyone here that wishes to be heard?
I have a question. Is, uh, installing the historical marker part of this phase of the renovation?
Yes, I would think so, yes. It's not part of, it wasn't part of the bid, but, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Dockery has indicated that they can, they can mount that, whoever, whoever we decide to have it mounted at some point.
You pointed up, you pointed up when this visitor center opened. The one of them, the doors in the center opened.
Exactly.
Kathy, glad to have you here too.
I would like to thank each and one of you for helping us be able to do this duck race for the boys this year and, and helps with the adjunct fundraiser to raise a little bit more money because we're gonna need about $20,000 per room. And us, us has doubled since last December when the girls went on their trip. So we really appreciate your support and thank you so much for hearing us and helping us.
Appreciate what y'all do for the kids too.
Thank you.
I wanted to say if we had our ducks in the row the first time.
They got that line somewhere, didn't they?
No, no ducks in the row.
That seems like a good place to end. We heard you.